Good evening. I would like to call to order the Belbrook City Council meeting for December 14th, 2015. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. Formal approval of the work session and city council meeting minutes of November 23rd, 2015. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of the last meeting?
None, Mayor.
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements and special guests. We have some swearing in of some council people in this past election, and also a member of the planning board, Mr. Van Heisen. Mr. Van Veld Heisen. Did I get it correct? And then also, we'll have Greg Sparks here with our bicentennial committee to give us an update on that. So I will start with Mr. David Van Veld Heisen. If you'd like to come up here. First off, thank you very much for volunteering for the planning board. Greatly appreciated. It means a lot to the city and is a very important position for us. And would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear
that I will support
That I will support
the Constitution
Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution
and the Constitution
of the state of Ohio
of the state of Ohio
and will obey
and will obey
the laws thereof
the laws thereof
I will in all respects
I will in all respects
uphold and enforce
uphold and enforce
the provisions
the provisions
of the Charter
of the Charter
and the ordinances
and the ordinances
of Belbrook
of Belbrook
and will faithfully discharge
and will faithfully discharge
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
upon which
upon which
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Very nice job.
Thank you, sir.
And then we just need a signature.
Many words.
Yes, they are. Thank you very much. Next, I would first like to congratulate our city council and the elections this past November. I know it's tough competition. And so I will bring one person up at a time, and we will swear our current three members who were up for reelection in 2000 November. What was the election? November 2nd?
Something like that.
Third.
Third.
Third. That were reelected November 3rd, 2015, to four-year terms. So we will start with Mr. Martin. Now I can make this hard or easy, John. Mr. Martin, would you please raise your right hand? I, John Martin
I, John Martin
solemnly swear
solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution
the Constitution
of the United States of America
of the United States of America
and the Constitution
and the Constitution
of the state of Ohio
of the state of Ohio
and will obey the laws thereof
and will obey the laws thereof
I swear to
I swear to
in all respects
in all respects
uphold and enforce
uphold and enforce
the provisions of the Charter
the provisions of the Charter
and the ordinances of Belbrook
and the ordinances of Belbrook
and faithfully discharge
and faithfully discharge
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of Belbrook City Council member
of Belbrook City Council member
upon which
upon which
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Thank you very much for serving, and congratulations. And a signature, please. I don't know how it depends.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Councilman Martin.
Thank you.
Next, Mrs. Middlestetter. And congratulations to you also.
Thank you.
And would you please raise your right hand? I
I
Elaine Middlestetter
Elaine Middlestetter
solemnly swear
solemnly swear
that I will support
that I will support
the Constitution
the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
of America
of America
and the Constitution of the state of Ohio
and the Constitution of the state of Ohio
and will obey the laws
and will obey the laws
thereof
thereof
I swear to
I swear to
in all respects
in all respects
uphold and enforce
uphold and enforce
the provisions
the provisions
of the Charter
of the Charter
and the ordinances
and the ordinances
of Belbrook
of Belbrook
and faithfully discharge
and faithfully discharge
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of Belbrook City Council member
of Belbrook City Council member
upon which
upon which
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Very good.
Thank you.
See, I changed it up. Tried to. And last, but certainly not least, Mrs. Donna Seager Lawson. Got new glasses. I'm trying out here, and it's bifocals. It's getting a little tricky. Would you please raise your right hand? I, Donna Seager Lawson
I, Donna Seager Lawson
solemnly swear
solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the United States of America
of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the state of Ohio
and the Constitution of the state of Ohio
and will obey
and will obey
the laws
the laws
thereof
thereof
I swear to
I swear to
in all respects
in all respects
uphold and enforce the provisions
uphold and enforce the provisions
of the Charter
of the Charter
and the ordinances of Belbrook
and the ordinances of Belbrook
and faithfully discharge
and faithfully discharge
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of Belbrook City Council member
of Belbrook City Council member
upon which I'm about to enter.
upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. And I once again would like to congratulate and thank all our council members for coming back for another four-year term, and also thank Mr. Van Veld Heisen for his volunteering for the planning board. Guess I don't get to do that one.
You don't get to do that one.
Moving on, we have Mr. Greg Sparks. He's chairman of our bicentennial committee. They have been hard at work over a number of months, and I think he's going to give us a little update on some of the things they've accomplished and have planned for us to celebrate our 200th anniversary in 2016.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We've been at work, in fact, met twice in November to be able to get the planning. Our goal was by the end of the year, have certain things done and defined. So I wanted to come here tonight and explain kind of the overall plan and what's been put in motion for setting the schedule, passing out information, getting money raised to be able to pull off the celebration. As I had mentioned before, the general concept is to take two events, the two festivals of the community, the Sugar Maple Festival and the Lions Club Festival, and use that kind of as the point of celebration. We've talked with other communities that have done this, and the sheer fact of not trying to focus on one big two- or three-day event and try to spread it out looks very well. And the fact that we, the two organizations of Sugar Maple and Lions Club had established ways of putting it on. We're just putting the theme to 200 years here in Belbrook. And from that point, the Sugar Maple Festival will change in the way that they do and adding things that will be features to the community for the 200 years. One of the things that's happened since we talked last is we did select a logo. This is a picture of the logo that was selected. It was done by a resident that's been with us for six years, Angela Brown, and she submitted that as part of a contest. And we will be using that for all the symbolism of the event, from flyers to what we have on a website, to paraphernalia that's going to be manufactured over the course of the events. As I said, it starts with Sugar Maple and runs through Lions Club. At the point, the main event that we've got sponsorship now is with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Park District, putting on a community picnic Saturday, June 18th. The picnic is themed around 100 years ago. We will have food there. In fact, we've worked up where five food trucks have agreed to have a food truck rally in Sagatrite Park, about, starting at about 11 o'clock, running for about two hours. Besides the five food trucks, Little Miami Catering, River Catering, has agreed to put a, what we believe is going to be a tent, and they will be down there offering food. So someone from the community can come down and participate by bringing their own picnic basket. They can come down and buy food from the food truck or Little Miami Catering. Food trucks will probably leave around 1:00. And at that point, we have arranged that the Dayton Claudebusters, who are an 1860's baseball team. I want you to forget, divorce any idea of what baseball is like today, because I have to keep reminding. I've got it from the Claudebusters. This is completely different. All they need is a grass field, some bales of hay, and participants. We are organizing a team of Belbrook residents. If you have baseball skills, one each, Mr. Randy Pavlik will be searching you out. He is going to organize the team for the Belbrook team, where the Claudebusters are a volunteer group from the Carolina Historical Society, and they will come and put this game on with 1860 rules. Should take about an hour, hour and a half, as the game will be held in Sagatrite for that. Preliminary estimates, hard to gauge. We haven't done this before. We say somewhere between 1,000 participants, maybe 1,500 is anticipated. We'll try to work everything, the logistics, to do that. The Park District, again, is sponsoring this. So that is one key event that we're looking at. The Ministerial Association is looking at a July yet-to-be-determined date on a Saturday or a Sunday, Ice Cream Social, which will be held in town in July. At the same time in July, we're looking at a play to be held by residents up at the high school, basically mimicking the play "Our Town", but it's going to be all themed around Belbrook, rewritten to put the places and faces associated with the history of Belbrook. Additionally, the museum is going to every month take on a role on the third Tuesday of the month to hold a, basically a discussion of what happened in the history of Belbrook, so that if anybody wants to participate, they can do that over that period of time. There are several other planned events, but right now, that's what we have on the agenda. It will all cap off in August, when the Lions Club Festival holds for the three days. There will be an event that happens over the summer for those gentlemen who would like to grow a beard or a mustache. Starting with the Sugar Maple Festival, the contest will be a picture taken of you at the time that April is here, whatever state a beard is in. And as you let it grow, there will be different categories by which. I understand that 50 years ago, when the community celebrated, they had a similar contest. And then at Lions Club Festival, that contest will conclude with declared winners in different categories. That takes it back for some time. And I'm still debating on whether that's going to occur with me. On the front of being able to decorate the community, the general plan is we've got the Garden Club, who has decided, or has worked out with the Park District up at Petricus Park, an entry point of a large floral sign, which will basically be 1860 with the logo and then 1816 to 2016, and will be there so that everybody entering the community pretty much the entire spring and summer and fall will see this as a display for the community. Additionally, through working with Mark, the local posts out in the community, I think we targeted about 25 different places, will be displayed with banners, of course, with the logo and a design yet to be determined on celebrating the 200 years. When I, when we end this celebration throughout the summer, it'll be at the Lions Club Festival, same Lions Club Festival that you've known and how they put it on. But on Saturday, what we're planning on doing is fireworks display, adjoining the festival to conclude. It'll be around 10 o'clock at night. And we'll try to get the whole community out for that. Again, everything I described is hoping wonderful weather for the spring and summer to be able to have everybody enjoy this. Couple things relative to the communication going on, relative to how people can find out. There's a couple things. And first point of communication is, if you've read the City News Letter, it got front page in the December version. We really do appreciate that. Got a little bit of the information I just passed on to you out in there. We also plan to have a website up and running. I was hoping to have it. I've been on travel for almost 14 days. But I got back on Saturday, and I started yesterday getting a lot of that stuff and the content in, that we hope Wednesday to go live with Belbrook, or belbrook200.com, where someone can go and actually find all that information that I just described, and anything new that adds to the summer, so that people can do it. We plan to link it to the city. We plan to link it to all other organizations that will participate with the festivities throughout the summer. The other thing that is ongoing is our link to our donation aspect of it through Green Giving. There will be a point of donation, and people have already asked me about it. And once that goes live, they'll be able to hit a button and contribute either through the website, directly to Green Giving, which goes against the foundation we've established for this. And then another will be direct giving through chat, through Green Giving. I turn it over to any questions you may have about the plans as we have currently.
Sounds like a good plan.
Do we know the exact date in 200 years ago?
It, based on the historians that have argued about this in front of me, some say it was like the February, last days of February, and somebody said the first week of March. We're kind of outside that. We did not make any official plans relative to doing something at that point, but they said that was probably in that timeframe.
Any other questions from council?
I'm curious, what was the event that happened in late February, early March?
They, based on only, you've got to talk to Dwight or Steve Berryhill,
Yeah.
who go on and on about this stuff. It was something about, they just had a charter, or something that said they were official as
A village.
Yeah, as a village.
Okay. Yeah, well, Greg, I mean, like I said, it all sounds great. We really appreciate you spearheading this
Yeah, well
and getting it organized and getting it moving. And I think it'll pick up speed.
Oh, it will.
People will jump in.
We do. And again, the theme that I worked, and we talked to Springborough specifically, our intent is not to go out and try to bring 100,000 people into Belbrook. Ours is if the Belbrook Sugar Creek residents want to come out and participate in something that reflects the history of 200 years, it'll be there for them. And we're just happy that if all the Belbrook residents participated in that, we would, in fact, in some cases, might be overwhelmed if all the Belbrook Sugar Creek. I'll leave it at that. One graces for a second. I'll have to put a different hat on. Lions Club. Real quick, the Lions Club did their distribution of widow baskets on Saturday. Chief Doherty's not here, but I want to say that he participated graciously. He loved the event, went out and delivered the widow baskets. One thing to note from this is normally we distribute about 200-plus widow baskets and about 130 widower baskets with the Lions Club. The club said this is the largest number of, when you arrive at the, where we've been delivering baskets of number of residents who have moved or passed away this year than they've ever seen, that the widow numbers had dropped very significantly. Normally, it's a couple dozen, and they said it was pretty significant this year, that number of, number that had moved or gone to a different convalescent home or something like that. Also, to the point, January is always the date that we invite both the police and fire department. You'll get an official invite from me here, once I get it on the computer, where January 20th, have the police and fire come to our meeting, talk about opportunities where we can invest in the community through the Lions Club to buy some item that they may need. And it's been very productive in the past, and we plan to continue to do that active, both the township and the city. Do that on January 20th for the evening meeting. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sparks. Great job, too. It takes a lot to get all those people together and have them schedule all those meetings. So thank you very much for being chairman.
Sure, no problem.
That is all we have for Mayor's announcements and special guests this evening. Next, we have public hearings of ordinances. We have two this evening. The first is ordinance number 2015-15. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes. Ordinance number 2015-15, and ordinance amending appropriation ordinances 2014-10 and 2015-10 to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations to reflect additional costs in some line items and reduce costs in other line items. Whereas the city of Belbrook adopted a 2015 annual budget based on the best information available at the time, and whereas additional costs have or will occur in some line items and reduce costs are projected in other line items, which requires the amendment of various appropriation levels. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the 2015 appropriation levels and several of the funds listed below be amended as follows. And there's the line items. 16 different line items, transferring funds from the general fund and into other funds for a total of $71,106. And actually, that's $71,106 less. So we spent less money than what we had appropriated. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, this is, we do this a couple times a year. This is where we go and we clean up appropriations, make sure that we have budgetary compliance for audit purposes and things like that. So this is the second amendment that we've done this year. This one actually reduces appropriations by just over $71,000. But within that, there are some increases, some decreases in the various funds and things like that. Some of the increases for the one item, for the administrative within the general fund, we had that nuisance pool that we had to have, we spent $8,000. We'll get that back via assessment over the next five years. We had an energy audit done that, it cost us $5,000, but literally today, I got the check from DPNL. Thank you for a rebate for that cost of that energy audit. So it was an expense, but it was money that came back in. Some of the reductions in the fire fund, we spent about $18,000 less in part-time wages than what we had originally budgeted. In the water fund, we spent about $35,000 less on new meters. We have now basically completely, at least ordered, all the meters that we need to install, the radio read meters. And that ended up being less than what we anticipated being for this year. So that's just a sampling of what these are. But these, again, are mainly to ensure budgetary compliance for audit purposes.
Does anyone on council have any questions? This is a public hearing, so this is open to our audience, our audi, our one person in the audience this evening. Seeing no one stepping forward, I move that this public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2015-15?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2015-15.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Seager Lawson to adopt ordinance number 2015-15 and ordinance amending appropriation ordinances 2014-10 and 2015-10 to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations to reflect additional costs in some line items and reduced costs in other line items, seconded by Mr. Schweller. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one more public hearing of ordinances, ordinance number 2015-16. Mr. Schweller?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2015-16, an ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Belbrook for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2016. Whereas the city council has reviewed the proposed 2016 annual budget, whereas the city of Belbrook desires to adopt the 2016 annual budget and authorize the related appropriations, now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Belbrook during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2016, the following sums be, and they are hereby satisfied, to be appropriated as follows. What follows is appropriations to the 13 funds that we have in our accounting system, so to speak, for a grand total of $7,291,950, nearly divided equally between personal services and other expenses. Section 2, that the finance director is hereby authorized to draw warrants for payments for many of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper certificates and vouchers, therefore, approved by the board or officers authorized by law to approve the same, or an ordinance or resolution of council to make the expenditures, provided that no warrants shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except the persons employed by authority of, and in accordance with law or ordinance. The fund transfers shown as specific line items are hereby approved from and after the effective date of this ordinance and may then be completed as determined by the city manager. Finally, Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. And this is the budgeted expenditure for the city of Belbrook for 2016, and I see that we have a anxiously awaited budget presentation to follow.
Yes, we do. First, the new logo. This is the first presentation where we have the new logo.
Very good.
So it, actually, the colors are better. It doesn't look as good on the screen as it does in print. So, but anyway. Yes, this is the presentation for the 2016 budget. I just want to go through a few items and bring attention to a few items here. First, I guess we start everything with our mission statement. And as part of our mission statement, the part that we are, I guess, are addressing here is the part about being fiscally responsible. I truly believe that the services we provide to the residents, we are extremely fiscally responsible in what we do. Council has spent a significant amount of time reviewing this budget to make sure that we're meeting the mission, we're providing the service to the residents that they expect and do the best of our abilities. So the first slide I have here is just a summary of all the funds. Again, we have income estimated at just about $6.8 million. We have expenses of about $7.3 million. We're starting the year, and this is for all funds, at just about $4.8 million. So as you can see, for all funds, we are actually going to decrease our fund balance by over a half million dollars in the coming year. And I'll get to a little bit more detail on that as we go through here. But we are anticipating then that we will have an estimated ending balance of about $4.2 million at the end of 2016. And one thing, and council knows this, as we go through this, and we did this last year for 2015, this is a somewhat conservative budget. And last year, we estimated that we were going to spend about a half million more than we took in, and it ended up being about $270,000, $280,000 is what the ending number is, because throughout the year, there's things that we don't do, that we expected to do, or we save money on as we go through. So I would expect that to happen again. But this is sort of our best guess at this point of how 2016 will play out. This next slide here is just as it relates to the property tax-supported funds. So when I talk about those, I'm talking about the general fund. We have a inside millage in the general fund. We have a voted levy in the general fund. The police fund, we have three voted levies in the police fund. The police pension fund, we have a inside millage in the police pension fund. The fire fund, and there's two property tax levies there. And then the capital improvement fund, which gets its funding from the general fund, is how it gets its funding. So for the beginning of the year, we're estimating that at the end of 2015, we'll have about $2.7 million in there. We anticipate getting about $4.3 million in revenue during the year, and we're going to spend $4.7. So of that half million dollars we were talking about before, almost 80% of that is in the property tax-funded funds. That's where that money is going from. And we are going to have an ending balance of just about $2.3 million. And that ending balance, although that is going down, that is still equal to about 48% of what our annual budget expenses are. So we're still have a healthy fund balance, but it's just heading in the, not the direction we want it to. we want it to. This slide just talks about the water-related funds. So, again, we're going to start this year with about $1.6 million. We're going to bring in about 1.6. We're going to spend about 1.7. There's a slight difference of $85,000 there. We're going to end the year about $1.5 million. I will say on this, given particularly the development in the township, some of these housing developments, depending on how those tap fees come in and how those developments go, I know the landings at Sugar Creek, there's ultimately probably about 300 lots there, and I know they're putting roads in there last week. So, those could come in a lot faster. That could have a definite positive impact on the income here. So, although this is reflecting a slight deficit for the year, I would anticipate by the end of the year, that would actually be a surplus going for 2016 in the water funds. So, talking about our revenue, this is really a breakdown of all the revenue that the city gets by source. So, we get about $6.3 million. Now, that number's a little bit lower than the other slide because I don't include transfers that are just going between different funds. This is money that we're getting from outside sources. The predominant source of that funds for us is the property tax. Almost half of our money comes from property taxes. That's about $3.1 million is what that is. Another portion, and I have another slide that'll show you this, but the intergovernmental fund is only 8%. It's about $500,000 a year. That's gas taxes and our local government fund portion, and then charges for services. This is our water-related fees, our waste collection fees, and our EMS fees. That's about $2.2 million. And then there's some other miscellaneous items there also. So, on that intergovernmental revenue history, and I know I bring this up every time, but I think it's very important when people see that we're spending in deficit, there's a reason that we have to do that, and it's unfortunately because of the decisions that the state of Ohio has made. So, in those property tax-supported funds, from the years 2008 to 2011, and the combination of local government funds, a state tax, and some other miscellaneous state revenue, we averaged $359,000 a year in revenue. In 2016, we're going to get $89,000. So, there's $270,000 that was cut out of our budget by the state of Ohio by decisions that were made there. There's nothing that we can really do about that, but that has a direct impact on our forecast going forward, and that sort of puts us in the position that we are today, unfortunately. We talked about the property tax, and that's obviously the largest portion of revenue for the city. This is for a Belbrook resident. This is where your property tax dollar goes. So, the majority of the money, as most people understand, goes to the school district at just over 52%. The city gets about 25, 24% of that property tax dollar, and then the county and the health districts gets about 16%, the JVS gets 3.5%, and the park district gets 2.2%. So, again, we're about a quarter of the property tax dollar. So, when somebody pays their $2,000 property tax bill, the city's getting $500 of that is effectively what we're getting. And this slide talks a little bit more about that, breaks that down. So, if you own, and I would say, you know, $150,000 to $200,000 home is probably fairly typical in the City of Belbrook, you're going, in 2015, for a $150,000 home, you paid just over $3,500 in taxes. That was an increase of $100 from 2014 from what you paid. Of that $3,500, our 25, 24% is $844. And again, for a $200,000 home, those numbers go up. What residents will see in 2016 is there are two property tax issues that pass that will have a direct impact. One, the schools did a replacement levy. For a $150,000 home, that's going to be another $143 a year that those residents are going to pay. And then the Green County Park District passed a 0.9 mil levy, and that's going to be on a $150,000 home, another $47. So, the combination of those is just under $200. And there may be other slight variations based on valuations and things like that, but we know for a fact that property taxes are going to go up based on those levies. What we get right now, what this $844 pays for, that pays for the residents to have public safety, police-fire coverage 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Pays for EMS protection as part of that, pays for zoning and property maintenance activities to make sure that our property values stay where they are, pays for all the street resurfacing that happens within the community, and all the stormwater improvement. So, that $70 a month that somebody pays, I think they get a pretty good, pretty good return on that investment. So, the budget breakdown, we have the actual budget of money that will go outside to other sources is $6.8 million. The majority of that is between wages and fringe benefits. That's about 54% of that money is that. We have another 21% that purchase services. That includes things like utilities, the contract we have for dispatching, our insurance for property and liability insurance, things of that nature, all included in that. And then the other significant number here is the capital outlay. We allocate a very significant portion of our budget, almost 19% of it, to reinvest in the infrastructure and the equipment that we have, the streets, the water mains, the water towers, everything like that. And I've got a little bit more detail on that here in a minute. In the wages and fundages, although it's 54%, the annual wage increase that we granted employees in 2015 were, depending on the employee and the collective bargaining agreement, was between 1 and 2%. And then our health insurance, effective August 1 of 2015, it was a 0% increase. So, although that's a significant number, I think we're maintaining that to the best of our abilities. When you look at those same numbers, but you break it down by function, we really have almost three-thirds of the events here. We have the police are just under a third at 31%. We have the fire department at about 22%, and then the water street department, which is our service department, about 28%. So, that's over three-quarters of our budget are those, and then the rest is our, either administration or our waste collection contract that we have with Rumpke. So, as I pointed out before, our fund balance is not necessarily heading in the right direction, but if you look at this, when you look back at 2006, we're going to end 2016 still ahead of where we were in 2006. So, we did have a nice increase in fund balance over those six or seven years, and around that time, 2012, 2011, is when we had the recession hit. The governor, the state had to make up their deficits. They chose to do that by taking away revenue from us. We were able to keep that sort of steady for a couple of years, but now we've started a decline here. And as council knows, we've talked about that many times in work sessions about, okay, what are we going to do? Obviously, you can't have that line continue down forever. You'll run out of money at some point. So, but at the same time, we don't want to ask for money when we don't need to, and we're going to try to maintain this as long as possible before we have to go back and ask for additional money from the residents. The water fund has a little bit more of a positive story. Again, if you look back here, all the way up to 2011, we had less than a million dollars, but now we've steadily climbed, and although that does show a slight decrease, I think with, some of that is because of the capital improvements that we've committed to and we've completed over the past couple of years. And again, based on development and the timing of those, when we get those revenues, I think we will see at least that number remains steady, if not increase a little bit more. You may ask, why do you need that money in the water fund? But we have a lot of aging infrastructure in the water system. Some of the stuff is 60, 70 years old that we know we're going to have to replace, and we're going to need this money to be set aside so that when the time comes to replace that, we can do that, we can try to do that a little bit proactively so that we're not always reactive in what we're doing. So, this little bit of fund balance here will allow us to do some of those projects ahead of time and maybe not get into a situation where we're doing it on an emergency basis. And the other thing that I would like to note, that even though this has seen a steady increase, right around that same time, that's the last time we saw a rate increase for our residential water customers. So, we have had this increase in our balance, even though we haven't increased the rate that our residents pay, and I think that's pretty significant, and we don't anticipate having an increase in 2016. So, last portion here is on the capital improvement program. Our capital budget for 2016 is almost $1.3 million, split between our capital fund and our water fund. We are anticipating almost $300,000 in grant, so the net cost to the city will just be slightly under a million dollars for those capital projects. Of those projects, the more significant ones, we have the annual street program that we are targeting at about $150,000. We are going to do the streets in the area of Stephen Bell this year. Those are the streets that will be targeted this year on that. For stormwater drainage improvements, we have $360,000. There is a culvert on plantation trail that will be replaced, and we have a grant that accounts for $274,000 of that project. So, we hope to have that designed and bid by July 1 so that we can, the funding is available on July 1 and hopefully get it done before the end of next year is our plan. And then on the water towers and standpipes of that quarter million dollars, $240,000 is to repaint the water tower on Upper Belbrook Road. It's time for that to be done. That water tower is constructed in '96, so it's been 20 years since it's been painted. It'll be painted both on the inside and the outside of it in the coming year. And then the other remaining capital projects that we have are related to our vehicles and equipment. In the police department, we have $123,000 budget. Within that, we have two marked, we're going to replace two of the Dodge Chargers with two of the newer SUVs, and we have the one unmarked car that we're going to replace. That totals 104 of that $123,000. In the service department, we have about $178,000. Most of that is split between two items. We have a box truck that we use for water main breaks that holds all the equipment and supplies that we need when we have water main breaks. And then we have the bucket truck that helps us, obviously, with the items in downtown, the flags and the banners, but it also helps us service the water towers, the water tanks and things like that. So, those two items are going to be replaced. The bucket truck that we currently have, I think we bought used in 2003. I think it's probably 23 years old or something like that. So, it's time, and I think we've gotten our value out of it, but it's time that we need to replace that. The fire vehicles and equipment, we have $142,000. Of that, $40,000 is for utility vehicle, the pickup truck to replace that, and then we have breathing apparatus, we have CPR assistance devices, we have a number of other items within that. And then finally, under the information technology, we have $70,000. We are looking to integrate our finance software. Right now, there's two separate systems for utility billing and our general ledger. We'd like to incorporate that into one, probably go to a cloud-based system so that we can get away from some of the maintenance issues that we have, the hardware issues that we have. So, that is a summary of our vehicles and equipment. So, with that, that concludes my summary of the budget. I will say, we do have the budget book that's available. Council has seen that. We will have a PDF version of that online starting tomorrow, assuming the council approves this. It's a very detailed listing. If you want to know where we're spending our money, this book will give you everything. And if anyone has any questions, they can feel free to contact me, and we'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
We'll start with council. I know, just to start this, city council and Mr. Schlagheck, we have had four work sessions, Phil?
Three.
Three work sessions?
Yes.
That we went over each individual budget and also, which includes police, fire, water, and we went over all those budgets individually, and then the overall general fund budget as well. So, we've spent the last month and a half in work sessions prior to this meeting, going through all these budgets, looking essentially every line item. I think the one thing I'd point out, it always catches my eyes when we were dealing with issues with cuts in the local government fund, one of the things that we looked at was one of the better hard decisions that we've all made up here, and that was when we decided to merge our dispatch to Sugar Creek and then move to Virginia. And that was one of the ways that we absorbed some of the cut from the local government fund. And if you look at our employee levels from 2013 to 2000, and this is FTE's full-time equivalent, went from 47.66 employees to 42.83 today. So, I think the city has done a good job. Mr. Schweller's the finance chair, so he knows much more even than I do about this, and I'll leave this up to council to have any questions or input.
Mayor, just a couple of observations. We've always budgeted very conservative. I have no doubt we'll be able to manage within the parameters of this budget. I think our city manager and city staff have done a real good job of working to the budget. It's not just an idle document, it's something that we live by. A couple of key takeaways, as both the mayor and city manager both have stated before, is that number one, 2016 over 2015 shows no real headcount increase. There's a small fractional change, I think on some part timers or something like that. We're not even talking a half FTE, we're talking less than that. Secondly, we're going to continue the waste collection at $13 a month. We have no increase in that. And then again, as the city manager said, the water rates, I think, have been constant since 2013, 2011. 2011, we're not forecasting any increases in that. So, I think we're doing a good job managing that, which we can manage, but again, with the state cutbacks, we put in a situation where revenue is not as great as it is, as great as it was at one point in time. We have to continue to seek out new opportunities for revenue and also ways to cut expense. I think we're doing a good job of that right now. Good budget.
And I think you look at some of the capital expenditures, and I always look at it this way when you are deficit spending, but essentially, we've saved up over the years, and we have essentially very little debt. The only debt we have is on the water fund, which in theory, we could probably almost pay off quickly, but we make no sense at 0% of most of it, and then the other one at a very little percent. But we save the money up, and then when it comes time to have a large capital expense, we have that money available without going out and borrowing. So, there will be times that we do deficit spending. But the overall financial situation is still on a $7 million budget. We have four total, counting water, four point something million in the bank. So... Anyone on council? Seeing this is a public hearing. Seeing no one coming forward, I move that this public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2015-16?
We'd like to move the adoption of ordinance 2015-16.
May I have a second?
Second.
Yes, John Martin.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to adopt ordinance number 2015-16, and ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Belbrook for fiscal year ending December 31, 2016, seconded by Mr. Martin. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, that is all we have for public hearing of ordinances this evening. We do have a couple resolutions, resolution 2015-HH. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2015-HH, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds for 2016. Whereas the City of Belbrook has adopted its budget for 2016, and whereas the 2016 budget will require the transfer of money among various funds, and whereas the Ohio revised code, section 5705.14, requires transfers of funds to be approved by city council, now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby resolves, section one, that the transfer of funds be made by the city manager as follows. From the general fund to the capital improvement fund, $250,000. From the general fund to the police fund, $100,000. From the general fund to the fire fund, $100,000, for a total transfers of $450,000. Section two, that the fund transfers shown as specific line items are hereby approved from and after the effective date of this resolution, may then be completed as determined by the city manager. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon adoption.
Yes, these transfers are included in the budget that we just discussed, but just to clarify, what happens here is the general fund, as I mentioned, has a property tax levy that we get money in that general fund, and with general fund money, we effectively can use it however we choose to. What we do is fund a significant portion of our capital improvement fund with that levy, and then we supplement the levies in the police and the fire fund with money from the general fund rather than, those funds are not necessarily self-supporting where they get help from the general fund. So, that is what is incorporated in the 2016 budget.
Any questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2015-HH?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2015-HH.
May I have a second?
I have a second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to adopt resolution 2015-HH, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds for 2016, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have resolution 2015-II, and I think maybe Donna?
Oh, yes.
Donna's going to recuse herself because this is part of DPNL.
Yes, Miami Valley Lighting is an affiliate of DPNL, and DPNL is my regular day job, so step out.
So, Donna will excuse herself and refuse herself from this, before we move on. So, resolution 2015-II, Mr. Martin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2015-II, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Miami Valley Lighting, MLVT, for street lighting services for use on public grounds and streets in the city of Belbrook for a period of 10 years, commencing January 1st, 2016, and expiring on December 31st, 2025. Whereas, the current streetlight contract with DPLE expires on December 31st, 2015, whereas the city is part, is part of a consortium of 23 cities formed to jointly negotiate a new streetlight contract, and whereas, the cooperative negotiation process has produced a new streetlight contract that is being recommended for approval by the regional negotiating committee, and whereas, the new streetlight contract will reduce the city's costs for street lighting services and improve the ongoing maintenance of the system, and whereas, the city of Belbrook wishes to continue to provide street lighting under the provisions of the new contract. Now, therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves, section one, the city manager is hereby authorized to enter into a 10-year contract with ML, MVLT, for street lighting services on public grounds and streets, a copy of which contract is attached hereto and made a part hereof. Section two, the new street lighting contract is effective January 1st, 2016, and section three, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage.
Yes, as the resolution states, there were 23 cities that went together to negotiate this contract. For the most part, Belbrook is, is a very small portion of this. We have a total of 90 streetlights within the city. There are other communities, obviously, that have hundreds, if not thousands, of streetlights that do this. So, the negotiating team consisted of the city manager of Kettering, Beaver Creek, city manager, and the Inglewood city manager were the ones that negotiated this. So, for us, this is a good thing because we get the benefit of their number of streetlights and we get the cost. Four of those 90 streetlights, of those, we have 39 that are mercury vapor streetlights, and we have 51 that are high-pressure sodium. As part of this proposal, there's an option to, all of the mercury vapor lights will be replaced at, at no cost. We have the option to take them to a high-pressure sodium, or we could go to an LED light if, if we so choose. What I anticipate doing is converting all of our lights, both the mercury vapor and the high-pressure sodium, to LED lights, and that's, it will ultimately cost us a, a little bit less on an, on a monthly basis, literally $10 less. We're only spending $900 a month to begin with, so it'll cost us a little bit less. There is some upfront capital cost for those LED lights when they replace the high-pressure sodiums with them, so the, the return is probably over the, the life of this contract, but I think it's probably, we've gone to all LED lighting within this building, within our outdoor lighting in our, in our facilities and things like that, so I think it's the right thing to do. So, again, with this, it's, it's a benefit to us. It's not going to be a, much of a cost difference to us, but we will, I don't know what the timing will be because you sort of have to get in line to get the LEDs replaced over a period of years, but I would, I would hope that they'd be able to come in and get our 90 LED lights taken care of in a short amount of time, and we can convert those and be a little more green.
Any questions on city council?
Mark, if you have extra lights added or add a street where you need more lights, how do they, do you have to renegotiate or just?
There's a, there's a, there's a complete fee schedule that, so usually, and I, what would happen if we, if, if there was an area that wanted a streetlight that we wanted to do, then there would be a cost to have that installed. A lot of time, what's happens is particularly newer developments, the developer puts in a streetlight that ultimately gets turned over to the city, and then we pay the, we pay the fee going forward, but they're paying the, the upfront cost of that. But if there was a part of the city that we needed to put a streetlight in, we would have to pay that upfront cost to get that in and then pay the monthly fee after that. These streetlights aren't metered, so it's just a, a flat fee that they estimate based on the, the time that they're on and off and things, and then the maintenance that they take care of. Miami Valley Lighting is responsible for all the maintenance of these within here. They do patrols on, I think it's a quarterly basis, they go through drive-throughs. If there's any lights that are out, then they're responsible for getting those fixed, and we can obviously report them at any time, too.
Okay. Mark, in terms of our total bill, how much do, I mean, just on a rough basis, how much will this lower our bill from where we are?
Very insignificantly. It goes from $893 a month to $882 a month.
Okay.
So, it's not, and that's, and there is a, there is an escalator, I think after five years, that the, the rates will go up, I think it's 5% or something like that.
Right.
So, we may end up back close to that, maybe a slight bit ahead, but if you think over a 10-year period that you can basically lock your costs in?
Sure.
It's, it's a good deal for us. But yeah, there's not really much of a savings for us, primarily because we're...
Like I said, we only have 90 lights, so it's just, there's just not enough there. Well, that's what, 1% or 2%? And for a city that would have thousands, that, that'd be some pretty good...
Right, that would make a difference, but we're, yes. So, that, again, that's why we benefit by being with all those cities that, that have a lot.
Okay, correct. If we had negotiated our own contract, we would not probably fare quite as well. Any other questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2015-II?
Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution to adopt, make a resolution to adopt resolution 2015-II, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Miami Valley Lighting for streetlights.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Martin to adopt resolution 2015-II, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Miami Valley Lighting for street lighting services for use on public grounds and streets in the city of Belbrook for a period of 10 years, commencing January 1st, 2016, and expiring on December 31st, 2025, seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, that is all we have for resolutions. We have a city manager to report this evening.
Should we call Donna back?
Yes.
Donna? Sorry, I almost forgot about you.
I just have a few calendar reminders here. First, the next council meeting, which would have been scheduled for December 28th, we are, that has been canceled based, due to the holidays there, so there's no meeting on December 28th. Our next meeting is on January 11th, Monday, January 11th is the schedule for that. And then, the city offices will be closed on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, the 24th and 25th, and then on New Year's Day, January 1st. And so, those are the closures. If anyone needs to come in and pay the utility bill or anything like that, we will not be here.
All right.
But the police and fire will be around 24/7.
Seven.
That is all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone on council have anything for our city manager this evening? Seeing nothing, we will move on to committee reports service.
No formal report tonight, but it's kind of weird that it's December and we've got 65-degree weather, but between now and our next meeting, we might have some bad weather, so just try to remember for folks to not park on the streets if we have a lot of snow event, so, so that our plows can get through.
And it's probably good for our expense on salt compared to what it was last year.
Yes.
So, that's very good, and salt, the cost of salt this year, much better. Thank you very much, Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Safety?
Yes, I don't have a formal report either, but I'd like to mention a few things with regards to safety. Every year, we're reading here about tragedies that could have been prevented, vet and mild weather this year, as we all know, so far, but that will change probably next month at least. I'd like to remind everyone to check smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, check your furnace and filters. If you're, if you heat with a flame, example, oil, gas, water, coal, the new building code require smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, and they're hardwired in with a battery backup. One of the things I heard in the news was somebody parked a car in a garage, didn't turn it off, I think there was a death. One of the things about the new cars, you don't have keys on some of them, you have a push-button system. You leave a car running in your garage, you don't have a smoke, carbon monoxide detector, it's possible to get overwhelmed with carbon monoxide. And then, as far as in the news with all this tragedies we've had with the shootings, just remind people just to be aware of your surroundings. I know our police department's doing a great job, they're always aware, they've been kind of busy with a lot of things, so, so just be careful and be safe over the holidays.
I would agree. Thank you very much. Moving on, well, we've had a lot of financing on this evening, but do we have anything else?
Mayor, just a reminder to the viewing audience that the, the budget is in our, our city website, as is the budget for the last several years, so if you really want to look at the detail, it's a very comprehensive report. I would certainly encourage you to go online and look at it. If you need a copy, I presume you can come down and speak with those at the city, and I'll be able to provide you one.
Absolutely.
And next, community affairs.
Okay, the only thing was that we sure had a lovely evening for the Christmas in the park and a wonderful turnout. There were a lot of folks down there, so, I hope everyone has a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Wonderful. Anything else for, that's, well, that's it for the committee reports. Is there any old business to come before us? New business? Open discussion? Mr. Edwards?
Just want to wish all residents a very Merry Christmas and a happy and safe prosperous New Year.
I had an opportunity to attend a banquet at Christ Church in Belbrook, and I'd like to thank Pastor Paul Santoro and his congregation for inviting all the civil servants and civic leaders with Pure Creek in Belbrook, a lot of persons attended. It was a great time, we got to talk with a lot of people maybe you hadn't seen in a while, some of them hadn't met, and it was a lot of fun and kind of learned a lot, so I want to thank them for that opportunity.
Nothing, Mayor?
Nothing more.
Donna?
I just want to say thank you, Mark, and to you and the chiefs and the service director for all of the preparation going into the budget. I know that it seems like probably to the public that we don't have a lot of questions, and that's because we've already asked a lot of questions and spent a lot of time going through what they, what kind of equipment they thought that they needed and whether or not they needed it or not, and so we've already asked all those questions, so I just want to make sure the public knew that there was a lot that went into preparing the budgets. Also, wanted to say thank you to the city for allowing those of us who went to the planning and zoning workshop that was down at Sinclair last Friday, was it last Friday? Yes, Friday. That's always a neat event because it allows us to get out and to learn more about different trends and things that are going on in planning and zoning arena. You learn a lot, you meet new people, and you learn a lot about different things, so I appreciate the city supporting all of us who went down, and there were some folks from the planning board there, as well as other city council members.
Ms. Schweller?
I'd definitely add, other than this is our last meeting for 2015, I want to wish the citizens a Merry Christmas and a very happy and, and safe New Year. One final comment on the budget I forgot to mention before, but our city staff, our city manager made a big job and a big project out of getting this done ahead of time, and once again, we passed on a very timely basis, not as an emergency ordinance, which is the way it should be, so thanks again to city staff and, and Mark.
You're welcome.
And all I have is, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and I also like to thank all the council members, including Jamie and Mark, for a very successful year Belbrook's had. This is the last meeting year, and I'd also like to thank Louis, who has patiently been our cameraman. How many years, Louis?
He doesn't know.
He doesn't know, and I don't know, because you'd think I would know, but that's too hard to figure out.
At least 10.
At least 10. So, everyone have a safe holiday. With that, there, unless Louis has something he'd like to say, does any other member on council have any other business to come before us this evening? Seeing none, I move this meeting as adjourned.